And we're live.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the September 10th, 2020, meeting of the Haverford Township Planning Commission. Uh, Kelly, could you please call our role?
Sure. Mr. Capuzzi.
Present.
Mr. Reardon.
Here.
Mr. Pointon.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Ms. Dobbs.
Here.
Mr. Fear de Mondo.
Here.
And Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here?
Hmm.
Okay.
Wow.
Alright, uh, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Um, first item on our agenda tonight is a preliminary final minor subdivision plan for 1613 Pelham Avenue. And, um, before we start on that, I'd like a clarification. And, uh, I want to assume someone's out there for the applicant.
Yes, thank you, Alan.
Is the applicant Thomas Thornton, or is it Affirm Investment Group LLC?
Uh, I believe it's Affirm Investment Group LLC.
Okay.
With Tom Thornton, an acting member.
Okay, so you guys have some type of, uh, agreement of sale or something like that for this property, I assume?
Yes, they own the property. Um, I'm just representing them through this subdivision process and then the intent is that I would construct new one.
And for the record, could you give us your name and address?
Uh, Edward Gallagher, 1284 Cedar Road, Rome, Mania, VA, 19063.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so anyhow, Ed, are you going to speak, or are you going to have your engineer speak?
I believe Bob will address the plan, and if you have any questions specific to the construction or anything outside the purview of the engineer plan, I can comment.
Okay. Uh, Bob, is Bob here?
Yes.
Bob Wager here. Hey, Bob. Um, I assume you received a copy of the review letter from Penoni Associates dated September the 9th?
Yes, I did.
And I assume you're going to tell me that you intend to comply with all those comments?
Exactly.
Okay, alright. Uh, rather than go through this whole whittney of comments here, why don't you pick out the ones you want us to have a discussion on, or need some direction from us on? And then we'll, we'll ask you questions.
Um, I don't think there's anything there that, uh, that I really need to get into. It's pretty straightforward stuff. Most of it, uh, yeah, I can, I can take care of just about everything on there. I don't, I don't think I need a discussion.
Okay. Alright, then we'll, we're going to open it up to board to ask questions. Uh, Jack Garrett, and Jack, you there?
Here.
Jack's not here?
I'm here.
You are? Oh, there you are. Okay. Do you have any questions, comments?
Uh, I, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Maggie Dobbs. Maggie, you have any questions concerned?
I do.
Good.
Okay, so I just wanted to talk mainly about the driveways. Um, so it appears lot two is having a little turnaround area. Um, and then the new driveway for lot one will be moved to behind the house to take access off of Homestead Road. Um, so primarily my comments are because this is a dead-end street, and it, and it dead-ends into a recreation area. Um, I don't see why we need to have the, the turnaround area for lot two. It adds impervious cover. And I believe the engineer had noted that it exceeds the, um, maximum width for driveways. Um, so considering that this is the, the roadway, uh, like the lower classification roadway than Homestead. Um, I, I think that vehicles backing out of this driveway wouldn't have any problem with a lot of excessive traffic. Um, so the turnaround could probably be eliminated, which would help reduce some of your impervious cover. Um, the other thing with the driveways is for lot one, um, the positioning of the driveway. Um, I just have, looking at, I don't see the length of it. Can you confirm what the length of that driveway will be?
Just a second.
For lot one.
I don't have a current plan. Uh, please, uh, give me a second. I'll bring it up on my other computer.
Uh, no, I mean, that's okay. So I'm looking at it, and you see the side yard setback is 12 feet. Um, and it's about that distance and maybe a little more. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess at me that it's maybe 28 feet?
I guess, Maggie, it scales to 30 feet.
Look at that. I'm so good. Um, so, okay, so 30 feet. Um, so yeah, my, my concern mainly with this. Um, in part has to do with the actual dimensions of the driveway and just being able to fit two cars side by side there, and having them be able to back out effectively, um, because it, it does have the tapered, um, curb cut entrance. But more than that, my concern has to do with the mature trees that are just to the other side of this driveway. Um, the property slopes up a little bit, and some of these trees are quite substantial. Uh, so my concern would just be the disturbance to the tree roots as a result of the construction of this new driveway. Um, and not knowing specifically what the grading of the driveway will be, um, and where the tree roots are located. Um, I'm assuming though that they are definitely in this area of the driveway. So I, I just want to express my concern that the construction of this driveway to the rear of the property in proximity to those mature trees would cause detrimental harm to them and possibly lead to their loss. Uh, and certainly we would have concerns with, with such large trees being disturbed in such a manner um, because of the, the potential to cause property damage if they were to come down in a storm, or the cost to, to remove them, um, on the homeowner's part. So, um, and then functionally speaking, I, I do also have concerns about where that driveway is located, and what kind of property is left over for that corner lot, um, when all is said and done in terms of functional yard space. Um, so they lose a lot of that backyard area, um, retaining, I guess, some of that flagstone patio. Is that gonna, is that going to be removed, or is that, it also looks like it's going to be removed. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
On, to the side there. Um, so then, uh, at that point, the, that particular property owner has, has limited space um, for any type of enjoyment of their backyard. So, uh, I know based on where the property line is located, it's not feasible, um, under this current configuration to put a driveway in the front. Um, but given that, uh, Pelham Avenue is a lower classi-, I'm not sure if it's a lower classification road, but it has less traffic on it, I'm sure, um, being a smaller stubout road and having only a few houses on it. Uh, but certainly the, the lower traffic impact is going to be on Pelham versus Homestead. Um, so the impact of backing out into traffic is going to be greater with the proposed driveway location than if it will be relocated to the front of the property. So, um, my recommendation would be if there's a way to relocate the property boundary in order to put both of those driveways, um, in the front yards. Um, and to have that backyard space reserved to protect the integrity of the trees, um, and to provide a, a greater living space, outdoor living space for the property owners of, of lot one. Um, and then finally, just a comment about the, uh, tree replacement calculations. Um, I know that was another comment in the engineer review letter. Um, so just to make sure that we have updated calculations and input from the shade tree commission um, on whatever those replacement calculations are to be, and then installation of new street trees as, as appropriate. Um, and that, that pretty much concludes my comments. Um, and, uh, finally, I'm not sure kind of what housing design you're going for, um, but this does look like a rather large house compared to other properties nearby. Um, and, uh, I, I do love the, the porch elements on the surrounding property. So if it's possible to put a porch element, um, I always encourage that to, to match whatever the community character is. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jesse?
My question is, and I, I emailed Kelly about this, so we can talk it out on, on this call. So I understand that, um, actually, Mr. Wager, your property is a historical listed asset in the township. Um, and I believe that this property is within 100 feet, which would trigger historic commission review. Have you confirmed that? I mean, it scales within 100 feet from what I could gather from publicly available information, but just wanted to say that.
It kind of depends on, uh, uh, what the, the parameters are for these measurements. I, I took a few. The corner to corner of the, uh, the property, my property, to that property is 113 feet. Okay. Now, wait a minute. No, that's the other property. The new property line is 113 feet from my property corner. Okay? The existing property, uh, lot one, is 66 feet from my property corner. However, if you're measuring from the house to the, uh, property corner, from my house to the property corner of the existing lot is 97 feet, and to the property corner of the new lot is 144.
Okay, yeah, thank you for those measurements. So Kelly, what would, what would be with that? Um, I mean, I, I would take it from, he said it's from the asset to the.
To the boundary.
The boundary.
It doesn't, this is kind of a, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you. Um, this is kind of a.
No, no, I was gonna say, I, I, I would assume it's lot one that is the trigger, right? Because we're talking about the whole, the whole of it, not just the new property line, right?
Well, I think, um, I think the intent of the ordinance is, um, that if there's, you know, new construction, um, whether it be land development, subdivision, that there's kind of assuming that all of it, um, will be, you know, it'd be involved in some sort of construction activity, um, that could potentially affect, um, or damage the resource. Um, but I don't know that this particular situation where they're actually keeping that house um, and not necessarily touching much of that except for putting in a driveway, uh, i- is really what the ordinance is meant for. Um, generally, I would completely agree and say yes, if, you know, from the resource, from the qualifying portion of the resource being the house to the property, the boundary of the property line is correct. I just don't know that necessarily, what was it, 97 feet from the boundary to the resource?
No, not 97, 60 something.
No, no, I'm sorry. From the boundary of, of the Pelham lot to the resource itself, so the actual house.
60 something feet. The other.
A boundary to boundary, it was 67, right?
97.
97, right. So we're talking about a matter of three feet in that regards, um, and actually.
The, the edge of the property is 67 feet.
From boundary to boundary.
I don't think that we're talking, Kelly, all due respect, and I don't mean to step on people, but I don't believe that, um, I know in the past, we've dealt with stuff that's got just two or three feet of the property is on it, and it comes under the purview of, of a review from the, from the historical commission. I, I, I'm not saying that the new house, i- i- it is very different moment here, but boy, let's not make the terrible leap until we know whether or not what those legal ramifications are. And I'd probably ask the township, um, um, attorneys to, to give us a, a ruling. And if they think that that's outside of the purview, then as far as I'm concerned, it's outside of the purview. But if they say no, because this is a property, this one property right now, and you're asking to turn it over until that's happened, it's one property. I mean, that's kind of, you know, I, I helped write the regs for the, for the, and we put together, and I was the first chair of the, um, Historical Commission, and I have to say, this would be a bit of a, it's gonna be my question as well. Sorry.
Now, but Chuck, is, was the intent of the ordinance so that a proper, a current existing resource wouldn't be damaged by the construction? And that's the point of the 100-foot buffer?
Well, it's also that the value of the particular resource wouldn't be damaged, but it's also that, um, and, and, and to make a quantum leak the wrong way, uh, we're not putting up an auto repair house across from, uh, an historic resource. So it's not a matter of damaging it physically by doing the work. It's a matter of destroying the, uh, I'm gonna say the word ambiance, and it's a wrong word, but of the historic place as well.
But nothing, nothing within that 100 feet is changing.
Problem here. I really don't.
Right. So if nothing within the 100 feet is changing, I just don't know that it's necessarily necessary.
I guess you're right. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Last time I said an awful lot of chinesed, too.
Mr. Mr. Gallagher, would you be opposed to presenting this plan to the Historic Commission and asking them for any recommendations they might have?
Hello? Your cell.
It's awful. I meant, yeah, I meant.
The, the issue is that it falls within Bob's house, which is less than 100 feet.
Uh, it looks like there's some, uh, concern that the proposed development might have an impact on a historic resource, which happens to be Bob's house, yes. So what I'm asking is, do you have a problem? Show your plan to the Historic Commission and see if they have any comments or recommendations.
If that be done concurrently?
Certainly.
Can that be done concurrently with the planning and the commissioners and subject to the final, uh, approval by the Board of Commissioners?
Well, yeah, it can be done concurrently. The only problem is, we have to make sure that the Historic Commission doesn't come up with some recommendation that impacts the, the, uh, development that you're proposing. You know, so we gotta do it concurrently, but we still have to wait for their recommendation before we make a recommendation.
And do they have that authority to do that? I've never been up against this before.
Yeah, they, they have as much authority as we do. They have as much authority as the Shade Tree Commission does. They make recommendations.
Understood.
And the Board of Commissioners takes their recommendations and decides whether or not they, they're logical or acceptable, or if they're not.
Okay, and, and do we know when that meeting would be?
Kelly, do we know when their next meeting is?
Uh, their next meeting would be on the 21st.
Next week?
Mm-hmm. No, two weeks. Well, yeah, not, not next week, the following.
Eleven days.
Eleven days.
And we can, we can reschedule for that.
Jesse, do you want to take that one? I'm not gonna answer for the Historical Commission.
Yeah, I mean, sure. It's, it, uh, I agree, and we, we haven't had, we've had very light, uh, dockets lately, so, yeah, certainly. And I know Stacy and Suzanne were, were interested and curious about this, uh, when I, you know, when I raised it to them. Um, and I think what we're trying to get at is that, you know, and to Maggie's point, you know, it, it would be those kind of things, looking at the neighborhood and not just plunking down a, you know, a standard house that we're seeing going up all over the township. I mean, this, this is a really, really nice little, uh, gem of a neighborhood, you know, with some beautiful homes and, you know, having some extra care.
Not to interrupt you, but I would consider the home to be rich of the surroundings. I built the home for a presently building. I didn't have it for, I have, not that it helps really now, but it's all stem clad colonial. I don't know if that does it.
Yeah, that's not gonna work.
I could, I could eat now to you.
You can present, I won't, why don't you send that information into Kelly so she can share it with the Star Commission, okay?
Sure.
If you have, if you have some ideas or concepts that you're looking at for that proposed house, that would be helpful and, and there are deliberations, I think.
Okay.
Can I, uh, can I add something here? It's, it's my house. I, uh, um, just a little background, uh, the house was built in 1919 by my great-grandmother. Uh, my family's been living in it ever since. Uh, we've had six generations living in this house. And, uh, I think it was in 1988, I was asked if I wanted to put this on the historic registry or whatever it's called. And I said, yeah, because I wanted to, you know, do everything I could to protect this house. Um, I don't think this, this new subdivision and the house proposed is going to damage my house or the neighborhood in any way. Uh, if you're familiar with Beechwood, uh, there, there's some houses have been put up that are questionable. There's, uh, some old houses. Uh, there's a lot of old houses have been torn down, which is unfortunate. But it's a very eclectic neighborhood, and it's not like there's any kind of architectural standard that applies here. Um, so if you ask me, I, I don't think that, that there's any reason to put this before the historic review one.
Well, Bob, as the owner of the asset, I would think that your opinion may have weight well with the Historic Commission.
Okay.
Now, as, as the owner of property, you certainly can present your testimony to the board also. Okay, uh, Jesse, anything else?
Uh, no, that was.
Okay. Rock?
Uh, most of my questions were answered. Uh, and I'm not familiar with the neighborhood. I'm assuming that it's primarily residential, surrounding the property?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a playground or a park adjacent to this piece of ground.
Okay.
It gets, it's called the Guest Track. Not too many people know about it. But it's, it, it forms the, uh, I guess, calls the southern boundary of the Haverford Township Little League fields.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, David?
Uh, no, my concerns have been mentioned by others, so nothing further tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chuck Reardon, you have anything else?
No, I, I didn't mean to open a can of worms, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to axe the, the, the project. What I'm trying to do is just to make certain that we, we proceed with a, a little bit of caution, just to make certain that, um, and, 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 and I have to say, Mr. Wager, I, my family's had a home for four generations, okay? In the township for seven years. It's, it's 150 years old, so we've already had it for about half the time. But, um, I know how, how that makes a difference, and so I'm not trying to, um, I'm just not trying to give you a hard time, and I hope you don't feel that way.
Not taking that way.
Thank you. All right, I, I, everybody else's questions have been wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, did I miss anyone? Okay.
Angela, could I, oh, sorry, could I actually get one, one more? I, the, the, the issue that Guest Track kept coming up, um, I wondered since that would be the name, township of that, correct?
Correct.
The Guest Track, yeah.
So, I don't, Kelly, did, I don't know, I can't even recall another project, what, since I've been on the board, when we had a neighboring, neighbor, she was the township, does the township have any comments or concerns outside of Penoni's, uh, recommendations for as far as like buffering or anything like that in the playground?
Nothing has been addressed. Um, actually, the one thing that I did want to bring up was, um, regarding the driveway placement that Maggie suggested was, uh, at the zoning hearing board, we did have quite a few neighbors, uh, come out, um, and voice, you know, their concerns with the project. And one of the largest concerns was, um, was that both properties have a driveway, um, mostly because of the parking that, uh, happens along Pelham due to Guest Track and the Little Leagues. So I'm wondering if, um, you know, maybe, you know, on the, on the opposite, you know, spectrum of Maggie's thought is, um, potentially putting additional curb cut and taking away off-street parking on Pelham, um, you know, might be an issue as well. Um, also, I do have a, um, one email, um, from, for public comments.
Okay, I still get a chance then, huh?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add that.
Uh, Bob, most of my comments are technical in nature. Surprise, surprise. On sheet number two, I had a couple of questions about sheet number two. Alright, grading plan?
Alright.
Okay. Alright, uh, you see where you have your sanitary sewer lateral coming out of the building? On the right-hand side, up front by the garage?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
You got a, uh, an angle on there that, you need to have a clean out there.
Okay, that close to the house, you need a clean out?
Yeah, well, the, the bend in the line, I'm pretty sure the township code requires clean outs wherever there's a change in grade or direction.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, and, uh, together with that, you'll probably have to add a detail for it, sanitary lateral clean out.
Yeah, okay.
The proposed contour in that back left corner of the building, proposed building.
Right.
Think you have it labeled as 294. Should be 292.
Yeah, in the middle of the houses.
Yeah, okay?
Yeah.
Right, and, and I share the, uh, same concerns as Maggie as far as grading within, uh, the drip lines of those two large trees on, on lot one. Um, it, it might be a good idea to have an arborist look at those trees and see whether or not, you know, grading within the drip lines is going to have a detrimental effect, uh, to the system or anything, or to the health of those trees, assuming they're healthy.
I tried to stay as far away as I could and, and.
I, I know, but they're big trees, so they have a large canopy.
Right.
Um, look at the detail for the seepage bed. Um, the cross-sectional view. Okay, um, the, uh, I guess it's an observation port or, or some type of, uh, feature that allows you to see whether or not the water has drained out of the seepage bed?
Right.
It's the piece that extends down to the bottom?
Right.
Okay. Can you put an exact dimension on that that, one of Penoni's comments is that the, you have a dimension of five and a half feet for the depth of the bed, where it's really closer to nine feet, I think?
Alright.
Do the math between the times.
That's gonna, that's gonna change anyway, because we had, the PERC test showed that we, we don't have nine. We're gonna have to spread the base enough more so.
Okay, alright, so my, my point is, I want to make sure that there's a dimension that specifies that, that observation port goes to the bottom of the bed.
Yeah.
It doesn't end up sitting up in the air or in the middle of the bed.
There's a thing that says one foot minimum.
Yeah.
Bottom of the pipe to.
Uh, getting back to the infiltration, uh, test, you did ti-, do those?
Yeah.
And you did them at the depth of 10 feet?
No, we did them at, at another depth. That's why I have to, have to spread the base now. We, at 10 feet, we, we hit bedrock before.
Okay, I, I was gonna say, you, you would have a problem, you may have a problem with rock in that area.
Yeah, it's a, this is a well-known business there.
Yeah, okay. Um, again, looking at that cross-sectional detail, it, it seems to apply that there's a pipe that connects the, the area drain with the inlet.
Right.
But when you look on the plan view, that's not the case.
Oh, it's a, it's kind of, it's kind of a, it's a side base kind of view, because I, I, I think on the plan.
Lengthwise, so it, it.
I need.
I can clarify this.
I think it's important that the, the pipes within the bed be interconnected, so you get more of an even distribution of the water into the bed. The way it is now, most of the waters will be coming in on the, on the high side, the side closer to the house, because that's collecting all the root drains. So I, I think it's simply just a matter. So I, I think it's simply just a matter of putting a couple of cross pipes in there to interconnect those two distribution pipes so you get an even distribution throughout the bed. Okay. Okay?
Not a problem.
So, and you also, one of Panoni's comments was, you had to present your plans to the Shade Tree Commission. And Kelly, when do they meet?
They are on the fourth Monday of the month.
Fourth Monday. And that's what, the 28th?
The 28th, yes.
Okay. So basically, your, your next steps are go to the Shade Tree Commission and to the Historic Commission, get their inputs, and then revise the plans and get them back into us so Panoni's can review them. And our next meeting's in two weeks. I don't know if you can accomplish all that in two weeks, but we also have a meeting on the second Thursday of October. So assuming all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, we probably could make some type of recommendation at that meeting. Okay? But it all depends on you coming up with a revised plan that basically addresses all the comments to the best of your ability, and, you know, we take care of meeting with the Shade Tree Commission and the Star Commission.
Well, it, it, it looks like I won't be able to make all the necessary additions and revisions until I get here from the historic review and the Shade Tree Commission.
Right.
I'm not, it's not gonna, that's not gonna happen this...
There's, there's a lot of the comments that you can take care of in the meantime.
But I, you know, I can't submit for the next Planning Commission meeting until I get all that stuff.
Right, right. Probably my first one in October. I expect that you might be able to make it in the beginning of October.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Chuck Riordan, not Chuck Riordan, Chuck Faulkner, you have anything else you want to add, Chuck?
No, I don't, Mr. Capuzzi. I think, I think everything's in your letter, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay. Kelly, was there any special conditions at the zoning board?
Um...
Application?
Nothing out of the ordinary, if I remember correctly. No, that the project must be completed within a year in accordance with the notes of testimony, the testimony provided at the hearing.
Okay. All right. One, one other thing, Ed Gallagher? Yes? Most of the houses along Homestead Road that back up to the park have fences along the back of their properties just to keep people from the park trans, trans, running onto their properties. There's no fence along this section of your property, and it might be a good idea to consider putting a fence in just so that you don't have anybody wandering through.
Now, certainly make that recommendation to Thornton's, but I see it as a good selling feature as well, like you said, to keep wanderers out of your backyard.
And, and the other thing is, during construction, that seepage bed, it's gonna be important that you have a construction fence around that excavation so that there's no accidents.
The open excavation?
Yes, exactly.
Certainly.
That's, that's gonna be a significant excavation, I think, especially if you have to spread it out more than it already is.
And can I add that when you're putting a fence up against a public park, it is in the best interest of the safety of the children that that fence not be a solid fence, but something that one can see through so that the police, and this is just something for your consideration, but so the police, when they're making their sweeps, can look into the park and see that there's no bad guys lurking behind. So if you put up a fence along that edge, I would, I would ask you to consider putting up something that will allow for the, our, our law enforcement people and concerned citizens in the community to be able to sort of police the community and make sure kids are safe back in the park. Just a thought. But it's something that we have advised other developers to do over the period of the last five to 10 years. So just a words to the wise, it would be a good idea, and Angela, I didn't mean to step on you, but you're the one who taught me that.
No problem. Okay, Ed and Bob, thank you very much for...
I had the public comment, I mentioned it earlier.
I'm sorry, public comment.
That's why I mentioned it earlier, Angela.
I, I said right.
And it's a long one, so be prepared to listen to me. To the Planning Commission, my name is David Spears, my wife, Maureen Clackam, and I live at 700 Homestead Avenue, the only property directly abutting 1613 Pelham Avenue. One of the reasons we bought our house was the fact that there was a large lot next to us with two large 200-year oak trees on the Pelham lot, which had provided a lot shade on our backyard deck for us, as well as the fact that there was a sense of privacy coming from the fact that there wasn't a large house visible right next to us when we were on the deck, excuse me. The feel and experience of being on our deck in the afternoon has significantly changed since the new owner of 1613 Pelham Avenue cut down those two trees. We understand that it was the new owner's right to do so. While our preference would be that the subdivision not be approved and no additional house be built on the subdivided lot, we would at least request that the visible profile of the new house be limited, both by the allowed size for the new house and by the planting of a fast-growing tree or bush barrier to hopefully limit our view of the new house. We know that Section 182-713B of the zoning code says that when a lot is subdivided, the existing building and any proposed building must comply in all aspects with the area and other requirements of the district in which such building is located. As noted in the zoning board's notice of its hearing when the subdivision application was discussed, the existing house does not comply with the front and side yard minimum setback requirements of Section 182-206 for a core lot. So per that section, it appears the subdividing and the building of a new house in subdivided lots should technically not be allowed. At the very least, we would request that the new house, the subdivided lot, comply in all respects with the zoning code with no exceptions, particularly with regard to any front, side, and backyard setback requirements and building height restrictions. Thank you for your consideration of our concerns, David Spears and Maureen Clackam.
Will you make sure that the Shade Tree Commission gets a copy of that comment?
Sure.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. All right, so, Ed and Bob, thank you for being with us tonight, and look forward to seeing your revised plans.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda is our, review of our minutes from our last meeting.
August 13th.
What's that?
The August 13th.
August 13th meeting, right. I was just gonna say that. Anybody have any comments or additions or changes they would like to see in those minutes? No? Okay. I'll make a motion we approve the minutes from the August 13th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
David seconded that. Kelly, roll call, please.
Mr. Capuzzi.
Yes?
Mr. Irden.
Yes?
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Fear de Bundo?
Yes.
Rob, you're muted.
Please.
Yes?
Thank you. And Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's about it for tonight. Anyone want, want to make a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Kelly, well, we have a, are we, are we on for our next meeting, do you think, in two weeks?
Well, we don't have any agenda items now, so it looks like we will probably next see each other on October 8th.
Okay. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Okay. Good night. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, all.
Good night.